Conduct the city's business in your presence, Lord. Let us be mindful of the best needs of our city as we move forward tonight to do what's important and is the best for our citizens, Lord. Jesus, amen, we pray, amen.
Amen. Call the order of the meeting of May 18th, 2023. Lane, would you lead us in the pledge?
You ready, Jim?
Yeah.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the American state of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Ms. Vicki, will you call roll? J.P. Hodges?
Yes, here.
Louis Short?
Here.
Lane Tubbs?
Here.
Jim Adams?
Here.
Ally Sugg? Melissa Cho?
Here.
Jim Lay?
Here.
Andy Eklund? He said he'll be late. Okay. City Attorney Prince?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Members of the press? Let the record show we have a quorum. Okay, first, I need a motion to waive the reading of the minutes and approve the minutes as presented of the April 20th, 2023 city council meeting.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Vicki?
Jim Lay?
Yes.
Melissa Cho?
No.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Stand.
Louis Short?
Yes.
J.P. Hodges?
Yes.
Are there some changes that need to be made?
Yes.
I wasn't here last meeting.
Oh.
Don't know.
On the last page where it says the mayor stated the council had asked for a budget overview in the first quarter and asked that the council members meet with their department heads and be prepared to meet in a workshop, the council agreed. I did not agree. I don't know if other people agreed. And a date was set, and I said that I wasn't going to be able to be there, so it's...
Yeah, and we have changed that, too.
We've changed the date.
Yeah.
But I will not be there. We've already set the budget, and if there needs to be a budget amendment, that needs to be presented at regular council meetings.
Okay, well, the last, at the end of the year, they, you know, we expected a possible recession, and some items were not budgeted for, and so the council said that they would look at it again in the first quarter.
That wasn't my understanding. My understanding was that council discussed that there was a possible recession and that if something needed to be revisited, I didn't at all agree to a whole budget, doing a whole new budget.
No, we don't have to do a whole new budget.
But that's what this is. We've already met hours and set the budget. This is meeting with each department head and then having a workshop all together.
The minutes are just to approve what we discussed and talked about last week.
Yeah, that's not what...
Not necessarily you agree with what was said.
But I didn't, that's not what I agreed with. That's not what I understood, so I'm not approv, I mean, I'm not going to approve it. So if y'all want to, that's great, but that's not what I agreed to.
Four is not enough for the...
No. We'll have to put it on next month.
Okay.
Okay, next, I need approval of payments journals for April 1st through April 30th, 2023.
So moved. All second.
Any discussion? Ms. Vicki?
Jim Lay?
Yes.
Melissa Cho?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
J.P. Hodges?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I don't.
No, I gotta do street fund financial statement. Okay, I also need approval for the street fund, financial statement, sanitation fund, general fund, community center, O-N-M, and Miss Alenia's funds dated April 30th, 2023, since I didn't do it all at once.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Ms. Vicki?
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Melissa Cho?
Yes.
Jim Lay?
Yes.
J.P. Hodges?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, you have your supervisor reports. I'd like to add that we have a new animal control officer. I want to call him Ben. Jonathan. Jonathan Hembray, and he has been taking classes and been training with the officers over in Cersei, and he's going to be a good asset to the team. You guys have any questions for your supervisors? Okay, update on bond projects. The Sandy Beach bathroom should be completed in time for Memorial Day, and Spring Park is coming along. They're hoping that they can lay the turf next week, and the new sidewalks look good. And the stormwater project is still waiting on R.D.O.T. to complete the plans for Main Street. Okay, new business. Set a cemetery decoration date. I would like to set that for June 3rd. Ballfield roof repair. This is something that needed to be repaired for some time, and I've turned it down on insurance, and when that is finished, we can, we have a document to let them know when it is complete for them to release the rest of the funds. Okay, ordinance...
They only pay about a third of it.
Well, they only pay, they took the deductible out, gave us what was left over at cash value, and so at the end of that, there's a form that we have to fill out to let them know that it was complete before they release the rest of those funds. That form.
So how much, will this have an insurance increase?
No.
Premium increase? Will this increase our premiums? It's usually assets of that size.
Okay, ordinance doing business with Mr. Ronald Phelps. Can I get someone to read the ordinance?
Do you have a hard copy?
I've got one. I can do it.
Okay.
Ms. Vicki, what ordinance number is this going to be?
If it is passed, it will be 2023-12.
Ordinance number 2023-12, an ordinance authorizing the city of Heber Springs to conduct business with volunteer fire member Ronald Phelps doing business as Phelps CPR training, prescribing the extended said authority and for other purposes, be it ordained by the city council of Heber Springs, Arkansas, as follows. Section 1, volunteer fire member holds an ownership interest in and operates business within the city limits of Heber Springs, excuse me, within the city of Heber Springs that provides emergency training services, which business operate under the name of Phelps CPR training. Section 2, in accordance with Arkansas Code Annotated Section 14-2-107B1, and subject to the requirements of Heber Springs Municipal Code Section 3.04.05, the city here, council hereby authorizes the mayor to contract with volunteer fire member Ronald Phelps doing business as Phelps CPR training despite any direct or indirect benefit volunteer fire member Ronald Phelps may derive from said business. Section 3, the authority granted herein to the mayor to conduct business with the volunteer fire member Ronald Phelps doing business as Phelps CPR training shall be limited in scope, time, and cost of the purchase of emergency training services or related products and supplies.
Do we want to put a cap on that, or like a deal with others, or...
Question for the council.
Yeah.
Do we typically?
Yeah, I think so. I don't know if we do for Lane, what we do for Ally, I believe. A couple others, don't we? Put a cap on...
We have on, on some.
Yeah, there is, um...
I don't think Ally's most recent ordinance included a cap.
No, because there are already, there's one already set for the state. It's like just under 10,000.
That's why we stopped doing that.
Yeah.
Yeah, the max is 10,000 before you do the ordinance. Okay. I'll make a motion to place on the second reading my title only. All second.
J.P. Hodges?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Melissa Cho?
Yes.
Jim Lay?
Motion carried.
Read it.
Ordinance number 2023-12, an ordinance authorizing the city of Heber Springs to conduct business with volunteer fire member Ronald Phelps doing business as Phelps CPR training, prescribing the extent of said authority and for other purposes.
I'll make the motion to read it on the third reading by title only.
Second that.
Jim Lay?
Yes.
Melissa Cho?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
J.P. Hodges?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2023-12, an ordinance authorizing the city of Heber Springs to conduct business with volunteer fire member Ronald Phelps doing business as Phelps CPR training, prescribing the extent of said authority and, and for other purposes.
I move we adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Ms. Vicki?
Melissa Cho?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
J.P. Hodges?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Lay?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, we have the resolution for the ARPA funds. This is for the second half. We received two payments, and we had to wait for the, the interest rate this morning.
Did you say what, for the account we're putting it in, or what do you...
For the, um, was it the interest rate? The final numbers.
Yes, we had to wait for all the interest to post through today so that we could free up every penny of it instead of having, instead of having a little bit left.
Yeah.
That makes sense. All right.
Would someone like to read the resolution?
Read this one, too?
If you'd like.
Sure.
It only has to be read one time.
Resolution number...
2023-03.
Resolution number 2023-03, a resolution amending the city and rescue grant budgets for the purpose of claiming employee salary and employee payroll contributions. Whereas the American Rescue Plan Act, A, ARPA, which became law in March 2021, provides fiscal cheap relief from funds to local government aimed at mitigating the continuing efforts of the COVID-19 pandemic, and whereas ARPA provides support to local governments in responding to the impact of COVID-19 and in their efforts to contain COVID-19, it prescribes the uses of funding, including one, to address lost revenue for cities and towns, and whereas the United States Department of Treasury has issued guidance and in final rule herein after FR regarding the use of ARPA funds, and whereas the FR permits cities and towns to apply ARPA grant funds up to 10 million for the total amount of cities, ARPA grant award, whichever is less, for government services, revenue replacement. This includes the payment of city employees' salaries and employer payroll contributions and other regular government expenses. Now therefore be it resolved by the city of Heber Springs, by the Heber Springs City Council, that section 1, the city council hereby appropriates from the city's remaining portion of the American Rescue Plan Act grant a totaled amount of $724,997.67 to claim the police and fire salary and employee payroll contribution expenses from date range beginning April 1st, 2022 until amount is exhausted. Section 2, the city council directs the mayor to move expenditures for the expenses listed in section 1 above from the 2020, excuse me, 2022 city budget in the amount of $724,997.67 to that ARPA rescue grant and to pay the city general fund for the expenses from the rescue grant. The city's 2022 budget is hereby amended for decreasing expenditures in the police and fire budget in the amount of $724,997.67, and the 2022 ARPA grant budget is hereby amended by increasing the budget in the amount of $724,997.67. Section 3, on the ARPA mandatory annual report, these expenses shall be reported under the expenditure category EC number 6.1 and title revenue replacement.
Thank you, Lane. Can I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
We can have a discussion, though.
Oh, we can.
So essentially, this is going to free up previous salaries from last year and then future until all the funds are exhausted, as he read. So is there a plan for those funds? You know, we budgeted for those, and then we'll budget for the other funds if they're not already exhausted this year. The extra money that will be in the general budget?
It will be in the general budget.
Right. Just is there a plan, is that going towards any thing in particular?
Part of it will go toward the bank building, and then some of it will go to the energy audit. And then there should be some left over even after that. Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Any more discussion? Vicki?
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Jim Lay?
Yes.
Melissa Cho?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
J.P. Hodges?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, we have our resolution for the TAP grant.
This is the transportation alternative program funds?
Yes, sir.
This is the one that Nick discussed, right?
And the local match comes from the bond funds, correct?
Yeah, it's going to make our sidewalk money, go further.
Perfect.
I mean, this is, we're applying for a grant. We may not even necessarily get it, right, or no?
That's true.
Okay.
That's true.
Yeah. Want me to read it?
Yes, please.
Okay. Resolution number...
2023-04.
2023-04. A resolution expressing the willingness of the city of Heber Springs, Arkansas, to utilize federal aid transportation alternatives program or recreational trails program funds, whereas the city of Heber Springs understands that federal aid transportation alternatives program funds are available at 80% federal participation and 20% local match to develop or improve Heber Springs downtown sidewalks, and whereas the city of Heber Springs understands that federal aid funds are available for this project on a reimbursement basis requiring work to be accomplished and proof of payment prior to actual monetary reimbursement, and whereas this project using federal funding will be open and available for use by general public and maintained by the applicant for the life of the project, now therefore be resolved by Heber Springs City Council, that's section 1, the city of Heber Springs will participate in accordance with its designated responsibility, including maintenance of this project. Section 2, the mayor of Heber Springs is hereby authorized and directed to execute all appropriate agreements and contracts necessary to expedite the construction of the above stated project. Section 3, Heber Springs City Council pledges its full support and thereby authorizes the Arkansas Department of Transportation to initiate action to implement this project. This resolution adopted this 18th day of May, 2023.
Thank you.
Good to do this one a couple times?
Yep.
Make a motion, will you, adopt the resolution?
Second.
Any discussion? Vicki?
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Melissa Cho?
Yes.
Jim Lay?
Yes.
J.P. Hodges?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Motion carried. Mr. Charlie, would you like to come up and talk about your grant?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I'm here asking the council to approve the airport applying for two grants for the purpose of updating our airport layout plan. One of these grants would come from the FAA, would, that would provide 90% of the funding, and the second grant would come from the state air notics that would provide the remaining 10%, so it'd be a totally funded project. The cost of this update is $161,360. That means that $145,224 would come from the FAA, and $16,136 would come from the state. Now, the FAA requires that future projects be identified and described on the current airport layout plan, which we refer to as ALP. So when we talk about ALP, we're talking about the airport layout plan. Our plan has not been updated for more than 15 years. So in order for us to get future funding for major projects, we have to update this plan and have it identified for the FAA. So what is an ALP? Well, an ALP creates a blueprint for future airport development by depicting proposed facility improvements. The ALP provides a guideline by which the city can ensure that development maintains airport design standards and safety requirements and is consistent with airport and community land use plans. So that's what we're here about, just asking that you approve us to go forward and apply for these grants. If you do that, and ultimately the grants are awarded to us, I'll come back and ask that you approve the grant so we can proceed with this, with this project. So that's it. Can I answer any questions? Sir?
So it doesn't cost us a dime, is what you're saying?
I'm sorry, I'm...
No, that's all right. So it's fully funded, doesn't cost the city a dime?
Doesn't cost a dime.
And it makes sure that the future of the airport, there's the plan in place so that we can receive federal funds at a later date?
That's right.
Okay.
So it's an extension study, and it will identify on this plan future projects.
Okay.
We should all have for years to come.
Okay.
As you know, most of our grants have been regarded regarding construction projects. This time, we're asking for approval to do a study.
Is this how we, did we do this the last time we got a study? 15 years ago, same process?
About 15 years ago, I'm not sure of the exact date.
Sure, yeah.
In other words, we've done the projects that were identified at that time.
Gotcha.
So what happens if we get one grant and not the other?
Oh, that's a very good question. That's very unlikely to happen. The way this works, once we apply to the Fed, we notify the state. The state will not award their part of the money until the very end of the project. So we give them a heads up that we're going to be applying for this grant, and they would let us know early on if they weren't going to.
But, but this is putting things that they say we're going to need, not, not things you're asking for, things that they're going to tell us we need.
Yes, that's right.
This is a study. It's a $160,000 study.
That's right.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Charlie.
I do have one question for you. Okay, when we furnish someone who comes in the airport with a vehicle, who's liable if they have a major screw-up?
Who, does that say that who's driving?
If, if we furnish someone, visitor with a car, and they get in an accident, are they liable, are we liable?
Oh, you saying our airport car?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Our insurance would apply.
To the property, not the liability?
Yes.
Probably going to depend on the incident as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, our insurance would apply.
All right, thank you. I'll see if I can find a tough one next time.
100% funded, I see no reason not to let them do it.
Got to have a plan, so...
Yep.
So moved.
Second.
Do you want a full-on motion with all the verbiage, or you got it?
Okay, Ms. Vicki.
That's okay.
Yeah, it's good of me.
Okay, Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Melissa Cho?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
J.P. Hodges?
Yes.
Jim Lay?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, Mr. Charlie is asking to purchase two vehicles for the airport in the amount of 6,400, and we did receive some funds back on the other car that was wrecked.
6,400 per car, or...
No, together, for two. 6,400 for two cars.
Two $3,200 cars.
Well, I think it's a little different, but yes.
Okay.
What did we receive back, much?
It was 25, up to, up to 2,600.
What are we getting for $6,400? I'm curious.
Two used vehicles that were...
High mileage?
They are.
Probably police.
They've been maintained well.
Yeah.
Where are we getting, where are we going to get them from?
From ACS.
64 plus the 26.
Minus the 26.
Oh, minus.
Yeah, we can put that toward...
What's that say, yeah?
Yes.
Oh, it's 6,400 total?
Yes. 6,400 total.
Jeez.
And then we can put that insurance money toward this purchase, so it really makes it less.
3,400. Did we have that set up already? Did we talk about that earlier in the...
We talked about it, but I think the council was waiting on a number for vehicles. So, and we had to find one, so we found two vehicles for 6,400.
What are they?
Mr. Charlie, what are the two vehicles?
Sir?
What are the two vehicles that you're wanting to purchase?
Oh, uh, we are talking to the...
ACS?
ACS, I'm a pollution specialist out on East Main. If you see their little cars, the little black Dodge sedans?
Yeah, okay.
They have two of them that are coming out of service when they get near 100,000 miles, they have to be cool. These are really clean, nice little cars.
Yeah.
They have offered one of those cars to us for $2,900. It does have slight hail damage, very slight. The other one, they, it's been out on the road and they're going to get it in and check it, but they would offer it to us for no more than $3,500. We have, in this year's budget, we budgeted $25,000 for an additional vehicle, one additional. So if this plan evolves and develops, we may come back and... So if this plan evolves and develops, we may come back and ask for permission to buy these two cars for around $6,500.
Well, Mr. Charlie, I thought you wanted to buy those now?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
That would take care of our needs there at the airport for the long term future.
Yes.
This time of year, we oftentimes, we have one vehicle now, a police car, and oftentimes we need two or more. It might, them and I have been longing at our personal vehicles to take care of our customers. You know, oftentimes somebody just needs to go to town and get lunch. That's what that's all about. Sometimes they may want to go as far as quick or very fair to take care of vehicles. That's how the vehicles come into play.
I have a question for you. Are your, are all the capital improvements and the engineer fees and everything that looks like it's through April, is that pretty much, is it done? Is everything done at the airport for that?
Yes.
So basically all the expenses and the financials are pretty much for the year minus ongoing fuel attendant?
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly.
Okay.
We've got, we're closing out this RSA project and we'll be getting, you know, we've been being billed periodically by the contractor.
Uh huh.
We've been paying that as we go and then we get reimbursed to a system called ALPA.
Sure.
The state's money will come in at the very end of the project.
Okay.
Thank you. I trust that Rick knows what he's doing and wouldn't mess up with the city, so I just approve, say we go ahead and move forward with that.
Purchase? Okay, thank you.
Need a second.
Yeah, I've got a motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
And we had, and we.
Any more discussion?
We had $25,000 in the budget, it's what we were looking at.
I don't see anything in the budget for expenses, but.
Yeah.
I mean, we can.
He'll just need the 6,400 for the two cars.
Yep.
Minus the.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. So we'll say up to 6,400.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Vicki?
J.P. Hodges?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Melissa Cho?
Yes.
Jim Lang?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, we have an interlocal agreement to share the usage of the Mountain Air Fire Station. This has been passed through the form court already, so it's up to us. I would like for us to read it and then see if we need to make any changes.
I'd be happy to read it if anyone, I'd rather read a hard copy if that's okay.
Yeah.
I've got a hard copy if you'd like it.
Sure.
Well, I do too, if I knew what it was.
It's okay, I'll go.
Mine, but I want to write notes.
Nothing.
Excellent.
I'm kind of regretting that, but all right, lots of pages.
You should have looked at that first.
Yeah, well, I did read it, but it was shorter on the screen when I was scrolling. All right. City of Heber Springs and Cleburne County Interlocal Agreement for Share Usage of Mountain Air Fire Station. This agreement is made pursuant to Act 430 of 1967 and Act 742, Chapter 5, J, Section 90 of 977 Acts of Arkansas by and between the County of Cleburne, Arkansas, here and after referred to as a county, and City of Heber Springs, Arkansas, here and after referred to as city. Witness, witnesseth, whereas the county and the city recognize their respective obligations and provide for the safety and protection of their citizens, and whereas the county and the city have limited financial resources with which to provide for such protection, and whereas the county and the city desire to maximize revenues and the benefits that the citizens derive therefrom, and to comply with the mandate of Amendment 10 of the Constitution of the State of Arkansas, and whereas there's a need to provide for quick and effective ALS EMS services for the county and city for their citizens, including providing accommodations, facilities, operations, and other resources to ALS EMS services, and whereas the county and the city are desirous of establishing an interlocal agreement whereby the city who owns the Mountain Air Fire Station here and referred to as a station shall share usage of the station for purposes of housing EMS services contracted by the county, and every turn the county will contribute revenues to improve them and maintain the station. Whereas by entering into such an interlocal agreement, the county and the city would thereby be able to provide increased and better coordinated services, protections, and opportunities for their citizens, and effectuate saving of revenue, thereby allowing the county and city to comply with Amendment 10 of the Constitution of the State of Arkansas, and whereas acting completely in good faith for the purpose of effectuating a saving of county and city revenues, providing greater services, protections, and opportunities for the city and for the citizens of the county and the city, and increasing the welfare of all citizens affected hereby. Now therefore know all men by these presents that for and in consideration of the above premise and for mutual obligations hereby created and mutual benefits so derived, the parties agree to as follow. A, the term of this agreement will continue until any one of the parties exercises right to terminate the agreement as prescribed by paragraph.
I have that highlighted.
Something of this agreement. I don't know, maybe it's, it's kind of.
I think it's F.
All right, blurred out, F.
Yeah.
B, there is no anticipated separate legal entity concerning this matter. C, the purpose of the agreement is for the city to share the use of the station and provide the housing for ALS EMS employees that are contracted by the county, housing for the ALS EMS equipment, including but not limited to vehicle supplies and other essential and or typical equipment, and every turn the county will help in contributing to expenses for improvements and maintenance of the station to accommodate the housing of additional ALS EMS employees and equipment. D, for the purposes of the agreement, the county's contribution to the station shall not include any payment of rent to the city neither by the county nor by the third party ALS EMS service contracted by the county. E, the city will enter into a contract with the contractor to improve the Mountain Air Fire Station so as to allow for the housing of ALS EMS employees. The county will reimburse the city for said improvements as its contribution to the improvements to the Mountain Air Fire Department in the terms of, under the terms found in paragraph F of this agreement. F, the county and the city agree to share contributions for the intended purpose of this agreement in the following manner. A, reimbursement of the station, A sub I, sub one. The county, the county will reimburse the city by matching any contribution dollar for dollar that the city spends not to exceed 15,000. Two, the city, the city is not limited in how much it can contribute, with the understanding that any amount it contributes over 15,000 will go unmatched by the county. B, maintenance of the station after improvements. One, any future maintenance that is reasonably in excess of. Do we have dollar amount on here?
I do not.
To the station shall be mutually agreed upon by the city and the county in the following manner, that the county and city first agree that maintenance is necessary and required to be performed, that after agreeing that maintenance is required, that the county and the city shall agree to the materials used and the company who will perform maintenance, and C, that after agreeing to the materials and labor, that the county and the city will agree to the contribution in the form of a percentage. Subtitle two, for purpose of the agreement, maintenance shall not include utilities, water, gas, electricity, et cetera. G, the method for termination of this agreement shall require a six month written notification of the intent to withdraw by the governing body of the public agency wishing to withdraw. On the day of termination, all parties shall be absolved of any future obligations to the other party except as to the following. A, should the city terminate this agreement within five years of the execution of this agreement, the city will then reimburse the county its original contribution of up to 15,000 depreciated by 10% for every year until year five, in which case the city will reimburse 50% of the county's original contribution of up to 15,000. B, should the county terminate this agreement within five years, then no such reimbursement is necessary. After five years, there'll be no reimbursement regardless of which party terminates. H, the city shall retain full ownership of the station even in the event of termination of this agreement. The city will retain any property that is solely owned by the station, or that was at the station only because it was housed there. The county will retain any property that is solely owned, does not permanently fix to the station, that was at the station only because it was housed there. Any property owned by third party ALS EMS service shall remain in the ownership of the third party and shall not be affected by the termination of this agreement. I, the Cleburne County Judge and Mayor of Heber Springs shall oversee the application of contributions to the improvements and maintenance of the station. J, this agreement may be amended anytime upon agreement of both the county and the city according to the following terms of this section. The party desiring to amend this agreement shall draft the proposed amendment, and after passed by a governing body, shall submit the proposed amendment to the other party, whereupon the receiving party's governing body shall vote upon said proposed amendment. Should the amendment be accepted by a simple majority vote of both parties' governing bodies, it shall thereafter become part of this agreement. Shall either party fail to approve this proposed amendment, it shall have no force or effect. K, this agreement is only for shared use of and shared contributions of certain expenses as mentioned above, the Mountain Air Fire Station. And witness, witness here to, Cleburne County, Arkansas, the City of Heber Springs, Arkansas, have executed this agreement by their duly elected officers who are authorized to represent their respective parties here to ensuring their rights and obligations set forth at this day.
So we still need a dollar amount. Mr. Fowles?
Yeah.
Do you have a dollar amount for the maintenance to the station after improvements?
I was just here. I'm in on the committee.
Okay.
Do you care to, do you have to speak to us about this? That'd be appreciated.
I appreciate you taking this up. This is a long time coming. Y'all, y'all probably aware, probably two years getting to this. If it was, to be honest, if it was, if it's up to me, it'd be like one, hopefully we could do it on page, but you know, you've got to put all this stuff in there. We've tried for two years. I mean, my whole district is in the city, is well served by an ambulance. I've been working to try to get ALS units out in the county, and this would be, help serve the south part of the county. We keep coming back to Mountain Air, good location. That's where we started from, but with a different mayor and a different county judge, it's just taken, you know, it's taken, it's ridiculous how long it's taken to do something like this, but we're, I don't know, I can't believe you read that that quick. I'm still in awe of that.
It's one of my only talents, so don't be too impressed.
No, I am, that's impressive.
It is impressive.
It took me about two weeks to read it after we give it to the attorney. Can I see, I wasn't prepared, can I see what?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Yeah, do you want to copy it?
I mean, I.
I have a question for you about the $15,000 amount, if that's okay?
Sure.
I'm not trying to put you on.
Where was you?
On page three in paragraph B, letter I, there's a blank there for.
This is probably the latest addition from our attorney through email, y'all, so.
Do you want to take it back and discuss an amount? I do have a question.
I hate going back and forth, but.
I do have a question about the $15,000 and basically the $30,000 renovation.
Sure.
That comes, and I'm, this is just a general curious question. Where did that amount come from and what is the scope of the project, just out of curiosity?
Y'all understand, I'm not speaking for the county judge, I'm not speaking for the county here, all right?
No, 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 we're just, we're just asking questions.
I've just been kindly in the middle of this. The, that number has been whittled, it started higher and it has been whittled. I suggested it being higher, but the way I worded it was not to exceed so much.
Sure.
You know, because what we're looking at doing as far as I'm aware, and this is just me, that's what I've seen, is making it, doing renovations inside that would, that would house a full time ALS unit, which could be a male and a female, one bathroom, is the drawings I've seen, that's two bedrooms, one bathroom, and using the structure that's there is big enough, what I've been told, I'm not a contractor, but this is what.
Sure.
Contractor told.
I'm not going to hold you to it, I'm just kind of curious.
And the septic system, they said is big enough, so the largest cost, well, I'll say a big chunk of that cost is looking like it's going to be the HVAC, a two ton unit, seven, eight, twice as much as it was two years ago. So I started out not to exceed like 60,000, but like the county, we'd have to have appropriation anyway, so I looked at it like we was protected by appropriation anyway, but I whittled it down to 30,000 total or 15,000 apiece, but that's what most of the folks that's looking at the, to get it, where we can have a full time ALS up there 24/7, that's saying hopefully it could be done for that, so.
Would this be, and again, this is just me thinking out loud, is this eligible for any kind of the county, and I don't even know if the county has funds left over from COVID or anything like that, since it's a physical improvement or anything?
The ARPA stuff?
Yeah.
We're going to, I'm pretty sure that we can apply the ARPA towards emergency services. And we are going to now, well, we hadn't, but we're committed to doing that on 92. And I know it's the city, but you know, if you leave the city, you're in the county, so.
Sure.
On the north side of the lake, we kind of looked at it geographically, like the south unit and north unit that's fully staffed. So on 92, we just got, I think we got the deed for some property over there off 92 as a gift from Green Bay Packaging, and we're pursuing that to have a structure over there with the helipad and have a full time ALS unit halfway in between Grasco and Berres Ferry about, you know, to serve the north half of the county, so we will use that, I'm sure we'll be able to use that ARPA money for that also, so, yeah, I think we can.
It just seems, and I know I'm not a contractor, but you know, it just seems like not a huge amount of money to get stuff done.
You know, we've been, I do not understand why it's been so hard to get, you know, ALS units out in the county. It's been, it's been tough, and it seems like, to me personally, it's a small price to pay to have an advanced life support system up there on top of the mountain, because it could take as long to get from there to equipment as it could from downtown Hoover to the top of the mountain, that, you know, if you're coming up the mountain, so it's something we've been working on. It's unfortunate that it's had its issues to get here, but it don't seem like, you know, when we look at our budgets, it's aggravating to me personally that we're not willing to spend this amount on something that could save a life, you know, tomorrow. When I first worked on this interlocal agreement though, I had, it was about half as long, but things get added, you know. I was putting a lot of faith, you know, after, we had to put an amount in there, I guess, you know, our best guess at it, and then I essentially, you know, we got to put some faith in our county judge and the mayor, you know, if we're going to set this money out there and say, do the best you can for this, I was willing to back up and say, you know, y'all, just, that's their job, you know, and they're going, they'll work together and they've both been great. I commend them. The mayor's been to the committee meetings and I appreciate it, and the fire chief, and she's been great trying to make this work. It's tough, it's tough. Say, my district's in the city, but it's been tough to get to where we can share this and hopefully, hopefully when the next ambulance contract comes up or we do something, hopefully we can work countywide so we don't have to go through this again, hopefully for ALS.
Yes, sir, and that should be coming up.
Yep.
Next little bit.
Was this perhaps left blank, this amount for the expenses, was it perhaps left blank looking for a suggestion from the city?
Y'all, I apologize. I looked at this PDF driving down the road. It got amended by Daniel, by our attorney. I didn't see this in there on the last amendment with that blank. I would hope and suggest that maybe we can get past that, y'all fill in whatever you think is suitable. If we don't, when it comes back to form court, now I have, we have to come back with an ordinance now, so this is taking another 30 days, but it's taken two years, but I refuse to give up on it, I refuse to. But now, you know, if the city agrees this, I'm going to go back to form court and say, Paul's in our court and we're going to, you know, I have an ordinance at the next form court meeting, but hopefully we can have something to bring back, to have an ordinance that way, we can get started on it.
Do you want to?
But I don't know, y'all.
Do you want to make a recommendation of an amount?
I mean, the city and the county is different, you know, has different thresholds like that, so what, just whatever y'all's comfortable with.
Five thousand bucks?
I, hey, that's fine.
So we can amend it and then send it back to the board.
This can also, this instrument should be able to be amended with just, you know, a specific line in it should be able, it's clearly amended and brought back, but we got to start somewhere and we've been starting for two years.
Right.
You know, and I'm committed, just my vote, I'm committed to partnering with the city, you know, it's a county seat, you know, I don't, you know, we need to work together on this.
Here's kind of my fly overview of it. The location is the location we would like to have.
I think it was the original location, and that precedes me a little bit, but I do think that was.
I like that idea. I don't think that $30,000 can do it.
I don't either, but if.
I mean, I've just got to do some stuff and.
Right.
I don't think that 30,000 can do it.
I think we should.
And I don't like the idea at all of not getting any rent.
Right.
Survival Flight has agreed to pay all the utilities, just throw that out there.
Well, they should do that and it's time for us to be looking at the rent that they're doing on the other ones as well, right?
And I was concerned with the terms, like, we can get the terms lined up, because like our terms with the agreement we already have with Survival Flight are before this, so I don't know if we need to just shorten this.
You want to make it coincide with the end of the contract?
I think it needs to coincide. I feel like since they are servicing the city and there's been, you know, the whole trying to get everything, I feel like the timelines are important.
Yeah, well, and with construction, we can wait until after construction to enter into, um, a lease agreement with them, and that might be closer to our timeline, because it's going to be the fall.
So if they don't agree to our lease agreement, we spent thirty thousand dollars for nothing?
No, we get this, all of this passed first. Then we can say our lease starts on this date with them.
That's.
Or we can extend it from that until, and make a whole new end date.
Somebody please remind me of how this worked with the, the station and the east station, that we, the city, that the city paid for those renovations out of our own pocket or they put in some of it or?
They put in. Survival Flight put in.
I, I, I spoke, I spoke with Shane several times. I mean, we've been talking about this and, and also his boss. Survival Flight's come up and verbally said, look, we'll help with this, you know, I wish everything was that simple.
Yeah.
But we got to have an interlocal agreement between the county and city.
And Survival Flight's willing to help and negotiate.
I just don't think that that, that portion ever needs to be in our interlocal.
Their what?
Their rent, rent-free.
Free stuff.
Yeah, it just says that we can't, yeah.
I don't, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure of why that became a focal point out of all the points I put down, but that was something that
Well, there's a few focal points.
That got, that got stuck on the utilities, but I'm saying, I don't, I don't think that, well, I'm just speaking for me, y'all. I wasn't really prepared to.
Since you're speaking for yourself, can we?
I'm going to be here and I'm going.
As mayor and toward all this?
Yeah, doing detain.
And, and, and when you said, Mr. Short, you said thirty thousand, now that's, that's total, that's fifteen apiece. But I do agree with Mr. Tubbs. I started out initially on this a month or so ago, I'll say the latest version. And I had, I had it like at sixty thousand, but I had it worded fifty percent not to exceed sixty thousand apiece, so the county, we had to go through, we had to get an appropriation order. So even if we said that, we still get, have to have an appropriation order if it's going to be twenty-five. But, but it's this thing, it's been whittled to get it through the court and court, that fifteen thousand is, is what it took to get it to here, so.
And then they'll have to go back through them anyway, so.
You know, if, if, if the city can agree on it, i- if they agree with it, I'm going back and trying to get ordinance so we can not have to wait another month and maybe get started with, you know, on the renovation.
Like I was talking to you a minute ago, uh, there's got to be a helipad in there too.
I think the city has the deed for that too, from the moors.
We do, we do.
I, I don't, and I'm not, I know I'm being recorded, I have to be real careful. I'm not speaking for the county. I've heard in conversations that the county has a paving machine and I've heard the county judge say, maybe, maybe you were there, said they absolutely helped on paving a helipad.
And the park lot.
The county, county judge had said, absolutely, if needed a heliport, helipad up there, got a pavement machine, we need to work on the driveway, and that's the way it should be, y'all. And, uh, but that's what, that's what I've heard. I'm not, I'm not speaking for him, but I've heard that in committee meetings. I'm sure it's recorded.
If it's okay, I'm going to address you with my concerns on this.
Yeah.
One with the rent, we've already talked about that, that should not be free of charge. This is a for-profit business. We should not be allowing them to stay on county, city, anybody's public property for free. Fifteen thousand dollars, this has already been mentioned as well, but if it exceeds that, then we're going to be held liable for that. We don't need to be. We're not the one requesting them to be up there. Blank has to be filled out, obviously. The maintenance, also the utilities, if they've said they're going to pay for that, then we just need to update this and correct that.
I think the utilities aren't addressed in here because Survival Flight would be paying for those.
No.
It says shall not include utilities.
Oh, yeah, we need to change that.
So, and here's another, I've got one more thing. Let me read over to remember my question. Okay, on, on H, it says that the city will keep ownership of what is housed there or was housed there and the county will keep ownership of what was housed there. Is that, was housed there before this agreement or what might be added to it later?
It's a little confusing.
Because was housed means passed from this, from this date before.
I think it's, I understand the leak out. I think he's trying to scoop in the.
I just wanted to come back later and say, oh, we're messed up on this, so.
It's that second that was at the station, like because it was housed there? Just a little unclear.
Correct.
It's on the exhibit A, H.
What, what page?
Uh, four, fifth, number four.
Four.
Four, H. The last three lines.
I can tell you the intent is, obviously don't make any sense, the county want anything that was there prior to, to them putting it there. And it's, the city owns the property and owns the building and owns structure and intent is the county helped pay. But if, but if there's things there that the county paid for that's outstanding, obviously, that, but it's just things that aren't attached. I mean, but, uh, sometimes the wording on some of these things are.
My, my understanding, my, my reading of that is that it, we're talking about during, we're talking about in the event of termination.
Right.
So that the was housed there would apply to the term of the agreement. So if, if the, if it was a five-year term and it was terminated after three years, the county is only looking to remove their property that was housed there during those three years prior to termination of the agreement. That's my reading, but.
Here's the way I view this agreement. We obviously have some stuff we have to, to change to protect the city, and that's perfectly fine.
Yes.
We, we need to do that, obviously. But at some point, the, the city and the county need to start to play a little bit better together too. And, uh, I think that this is the beginnings of, of us playing in the same sandbox again and not.
Well, I agree, but, but not the expense of the city for a profit.
No, of course, and I, I agree with your points a hundred percent. I think they're spot on. I think that a for-profit business should, I, I think we have to be good stewards to the taxpayers. If, if we're going to give somebody, I mean, I would, I'd take rebuilding for my business too, I mean, if we're doing it. So I, I agree with that completely, so. But I think we've got a good framework for moving forward together.
Yes, like Mr. Faust said, we got to start somewhere.
Yeah, I think this is a great framework.
So let's make some changes and.
Bring it back next month?
We've been, we've been starting here two years ago.
Yeah.
Mr. Short, may, may, when you're talking about, uh, for-profit and stuff, we just not, I guess, just disagree with, with you from the county stand, or from my standpoint, we're not, we shouldn't be in it for profit.
No.
We're not in it for profit.
Survival Flight is a for-profit. Not you guys, Survival, the tenant.
Yeah, and, and that's, it should be, and I've talked, you know, they said they can uphold their city contract and that, and that is centered to, to all this is that the city lose nothing out of their contract with Survival Flight.
Let's, but this is something new, and it says by the third party, whether it's Survival Flight or anybody else. So that is a for-profit business, not the county for profit, not the city for profit, but a third party for profit.
Oh, sure.
So they don't need to get anything for free.
But what they're, what they're offering is, is to house something up there if, if the county and the city included, you know, provides a housing area to put ALS unit up there.
So what you're, they're offering to make money off customers.
They've offered, they've offered to help pay for it, but I don't, you know, we need, say, do that in the contract. I hope that, uh, this, this is, I'm, I'm, I know this is ten times more complicated than it needs to be because it's because of working on two or three contracts. I'm looking at this like this is a bridge. You know, I'm hoping we can bridge this and get past some of the places we've been and have passed on this and get moving.
I'm going to oppose the idea or the end, end of the project, but
Yeah.
in the meantime, this is a third party for profit that say, hey, we'll provide a service if you'll just give us the free housing. That's not going to, in my opinion, not, that's dumb. I mean, why would we do anything like that?
Well, we can sit, like, well.
I mean, so I, I mean, I'm in agreement that we should do something that not this.
We considered that on our contract when we did the north half of the county, we considered the cost of them doing business, but the county, you know, I, we, we debated back and forth whether to use an existing volunteer fire station for housing, but I keep coming back to, I want something independent that the county owns. I want to stay out of the politics because we've run into the politics of maybe a local district or something, not liking the ambulance service and saying, well, you can't come here anymore. No. I want to get, we, that's what we've been arguing for a couple of years. So I say, no, we, we've got county property, we're going to provide the housing, and how do you bid according to this? And so that's why the price is where it is on that. Now, this is, this is a, a unique, I've seen a lot of agreements and stuff through the years, and I'd say this is about five times more complicated than I thought it may be. But it is an interlocal agreement. And I hope the city and the county can work on this. If it gets amended once every month, I don't care, you know, we should be able to work together on it.
Yeah, Melissa.
Ryan, I was just going to ask you, you know, what this does for the fire district and could you kind of share?
So putting a, a, a player with, 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 with response time for their fire management. Probably by two to three minutes on average, so not more than that. Right now, it is about eight minutes to get up there, roughly. So that's a, that's a big, big chunk of time that's going to save you. And then it also provides, that location provides more center records for to go east, west, and south, and all that.
What's in the bays? There are two bays?
Yes.
Right now? What, what's in the bays right now?
Right now, we just have two. We don't have, we have enough space to put the division somewhere, that's what I'm going now, so it's just bouncing around, we have other trucks in there, so.
So where would those go?
So if they put the station there, what's from station two, we're seeing a truck.
So one, but there should be one. So you would have a fire truck and, a Hoover fire truck and an ambulance?
So does that affect ISO readings at all or?
They won't change anything on that.
But it would be huge for?
And just, uh, I, I have to take it, I do this, I pay for the, for the, uh, prospect of the, well, we spent on station five and we're in all of there. It's less than twenty thousand, and it's bigger. And that was also three years ago, so.
Station five's which one's that, however, Mike?
Uh, out east or face.
What's out there around twenty, twenty thousand three years ago and you got what else out there?
Yeah, but inflation, yeah.
It was, it's two veteran crafters who were, but also has the full upstairs, the veteran carry officers, so.
Who did that?
Uh, we, we hired a contractor, but all the other.
Do you remember if there was an AC unit put in?
There is, it's got an AC, okay, there's a downstairs.
Okay.
And also there's, I think they don't need to pay.
So you feel comfortable that thirty thousand would cover?
Still would like to see some kind of, I mean, just some kind of quote. Could we, could that not be part of it? Like, I just.
Do you want to up that number?
I, I don't.
I mean, I'm with Mr. Faust on, you know.
I'm, I don't care about the number if there's something there that backs it up a little bit, I guess. But, you know what I mean, like.
But I, all of my reasons are to like, Scott, it was a contract, it's a, it's a.
That, I mean, that's.
Yeah, that way we have something.
But, but even then, it's us paying for a private.
It's not benefiting cities.
No, we can still amend this and take that out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, and I, we go out on a limb here since Scott ain't here to defend himself. That's where we got the numbers from. Our contractor, Scott's, he drew it up, drew it up, went, him and the judge and mayor, and it went up and measured. And that, these numbers are coming up from contractors that's smarter than me about building. And it's an estimate because it's renovation. If it was a new construction, uh, like north of the lake, we could, we'll have a estimate on it, but if we, you know, if we can do something cheaper up there that, that the county and the city agree to, do it cheaper, you know, but, uh, it was kind of tough on renovation. I think, me personally, I think it bumped the prices up. Uh, if it was new construction, that's what we, we, we chewed on this, like if it's totally new construction, we'd have to, we'd have to, it'd be easier to get quotes, but we may get into something up there where, and it may, it may be a little bit more, y'all, I, I, I don't know. This thing got whittled down from, I was starting a little bit high, but it, but it was worded, it can't be in excess of that, so, or fifty percent or in excess of that. But it got, to get it to this point, to get it to here, it got whittled down and it could easily be amended if the mayor and the judge were, you know, working on it and bringing it back. Uh, the HVAC system though, from what I've heard, that's what really went up. A two-ton unit, I think they were saying was seven, eight thousand dollars, something like that. Maybe, maybe more, I'd, you know, the city couldn't use a split system, so you know, there, I know the judge has been talking to some folks about the HVAC, trying to get that whittled down, so. I'm putting, doing a little bit of a leap of faith there and putting, you know, putting some trust in the judge and the mayor. If something comes up, I know the judge will come back to court and say, look, we, we need more, or, you know, I'm, that's the kind of way I'm looking at it, because we don't really know, they get in there and we just try to do as cheap as we can. But, but I've been told by contractors on that number and I'm, I looked at them like, I can't believe that, but that's what they do for a living. I don't do that.
Okay, so let's make some amendments and then we'll bring it back. Are y'all comfortable, um, do you want to go from fifteen to twenty thousand?
I mean, that would not be just the on our end, but on the county's too.
Instead of just throwing numbers out, could we just get, like, they said, just get a little something, um, like.
Yeah, just a little, little less of it.
Like the bid, the project out?
Because if it's only thirty, I'd stop great with that. Thirty's better than forty.
Well, Ryan has agreed to do that.
Perfect.
Yeah.
But.
And what else do you want to change?
Is a third party going to pay for anything?
Yeah.
That needs to be, I mean, the fifteen, fifteen from them or fifteen from us shouldn't be happening. If it's a for-profit business, I don't get that. Why are we paying them to earn money?
I think you're, I think you're correct. I think what the argument is, is that it's a sacrifice on the community so that people have coverage, don't die.
I understand that, but we're still.
I get, no, I'm, I'm giving you the other side of it, that's all. I agree with what you're saying.
The EMS side of it, so we will still have the same coverage. They're going to do an extra one up there, correct? Okay.
They're, they'll have the.
So doesn't it dilute our services?
It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't, our executive, that's all it does.
So it does move a truck?
It moves the one truck up there, but it's still our, it doesn't change our.
Not the fire, so there is an ambulance going to be?
They're not adding an ambulance, they're moving an ambulance.
They're moving an ambulance up there.
They, they do.
So the eight, are they are taking account of the city limits?
Yeah, they are.
How many, what does their contract state for number?
That's what you said.
And how many do they have? Four?
So they're still fulfilling their contract. They just have an extra.
Right, with the city, yes.
Right.
Yes. With, it's just.
Yeah.
It's out of the city limits.
But they're also servicing that currently anyway, aren't they?
It's in our fire district.
Yeah, this.
Right, I know it's in our fire district.
So they're still servicing it anyway, they're just being quicker to get there.
But I'm just saying, moving a truck to another space.
Okay, so we'll make some amendments.
It's going to split accrue.
Does, does that have a mayor, beer up there, that you come in and they go back and stuff?
In the county, when we did our contract, they added a full other unit. They're kind of floating around waiting for housing on the north side of the lake, you know, we've got a, it, it's, the ball's in our court now about providing them a place. And, uh, um, you know, that was, that was, that was in the contract, so.
So have they got one out in the county on the south side now?
North side.
North side. No, we, we didn't have a place to house them, so I mean, they're, they're here, they're in the, probably in the city right now, I'm assuming.
They, they've been housing equipment, but they don't have their literature with that station, what they hold up, which I don't have, and that's north of the town for years.
Yeah, they, they saw, they said, I heard that they said, I had been.
They've announced that they're going to be in town up there, because that's happened.
But, but, uh, we did contract with a full other ALS, fully, you know, fully operational ALS unit, and say, I, I just heard it's equipment, so, but I guess it floats around until we have a home for it, which the intent was to have something on North Side of the Lake. So we're, we're, we should have that deed by the next one for me.
I, I like the location, I like the idea of it being there and being, being able to service and respond fast. I, I like all of it, I just don't.
I like the idea of.
Nothing needs to be changed in it.
No, I agree, and I like the idea of moving forward with, starting to build that bridge back with the county. We're all better together.
Yeah, Eric's been great to work with.
Yeah.
Yeah, mayor and judge, I need to let them go to work.
Let's, let's try to make some of those amendments, like, I, I think, I would like to get a, I think, I, if we can get some lease for that, that might be nice.
I mean, because it's, whatever our lease situation is here, and also, what station is that?
The other two stations?
Yeah, I mean, it's, so it's, what's it, 500 out there?
I believe that was 500.
510, yeah.
15, it's about time to look redoing those, I would think.
That's why I was saying the times, get it, like, line it up together.
I believe they, I believe it's due, like, October, November, one for one and one for one.
But isn't, but really, we're just, we're, we are in the interlocal agreement with the county, so really, it doesn't even need to align with theirs necessarily, because there.
Well, I'm just saying if the services were different, remember that was the big issue?
Right.
We're using the different services, that was a huge issue.
You want the, wait, you want the services to align, or the lease?
Well, in.
Both?
If you get the contracts, the timing to align, like this said, five years, well, let's say all of a sudden, the city, county decide, okay, we need to use a different service. Well, you've got one agreement with this one company for this amount of time, with another company for this amount of, does that make sense?
You mean with the service?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
But that, I don't think that affects the interlocal.
No, or the lease with the building.
With the lease with the building, right.
You see a drop back there?
We got to get the owner.
Yeah.
I'd like to say, to address, I hope, when, when the contract comes up, no matter who it is, I hope we can do, I'm going to say similar to Faulkner County, but I meant countywide where it's countywide, but the city loses nothing out of, out of what it needs, out of an ambulance service. It's still countywide, so we don't, not even the city.
Just do it all together.
These boundary things has, has divided us and really messed us up the past couple of years.
That's what you're saying with the terms.
Yes, that's why I'm saying with the terms, get it lined up.
I want to do it countywide, but the next contract, you know, maybe.
We're on the same page.
That way you don't have a contract ending in a year, another one ended in five years, and then you have a mess whenever it renews.
This, this thing can be stopped at any time.
We need to go in with love, arms.
But we got to, you know, to me, bridge, bridge out to do this, but it, it can be stopped anytime. And when a new contract comes up, or it comes up for renewal, or bid out, whatever, I hope I'm allowed then to say, you know, hopefully, the county and the city will work together on doing a countywide project, you know, where we don't, where we don't have these divisions, where you can't go across the dam because you're in a different district, and that's out of the Heber Springs, uh, corporate limits. That is just as mind-boggling.
Only thing else.
On an ALS unit, that's mind-boggling to me, but that's what we've been dealing with.
Thank you, Brent, for.
Only thing else I see on it is, is reimbursement wise, if we're investing, they're investing, we're investing, there's no reimbursing.
I think their argument on that is, we can keep the building with the improvements.
Yeah.
That's their argument on it.
And that's just if it's terminated.
If it's terminated.
And did, one, one more thing, and I swear I'll leave you though. On, on the, on the location, two years ago, when just looking at it, unbuyers with blinders on, I, I pointed, they had County Mountain Air Station, that's the best, geographically, because the lake is right in the middle of the county, and 92 or somewhere, you know, for North Side of us, we did that, and then, then we also considered the county shop property out there, and was told by two different bidders on that, that it would cost more money if it's out there, because, you know, they make the most money out of Heber Springs, you know? But if we could share something out of Mountain Air, it'd be less cost to the county people. Uh, you know, I, it would cost the county more money to build something out of that road shop building, but I think population-wise, and the density of the population, the Mountain Air, I just, you know, the last couple of years, I, I've come right back to it.
Mountain Air's the spot.
And I think that's the best, that's just, that's what we, so, and it makes sense, I, to share with the city. You know, if it was a volunteer fire district, or it, it, it could work, but the city and the county should work on this.
I think we're all in agreement that this, this is something we need to do, it's just financially issues that I have a problem with. So I think we're all in agreement.
And go back to you, Brent.
Thank you for your.
Thank you.
Thank you for, thank you for coming.
Thank you for being here and not representing us, dude.
I appreciate you, sir.
Thank you for answering questions.
Appreciate it, Brent.
Okay, next item, we need to change the June council meeting due to municipal league conference. With the week after that, that Thursday afterwards, June 22nd, would that work for everyone?
Uh, June 22nd?
Yes, sir.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Good, good?
Mm-hmm.
Great, thank you. Okay, next item, we have a leaf and limb invoice that exceeds the contract. So you have all received an email regarding this information. We just need to make a motion to approve or disapprove.
I make a motion to dis, disapprove, to not approve the invoice.
Second.
Stated.
Any discussion?
Yes, just a little. Just to put numbers to what they've sent us, so you guys would understand. They're showing, in my best estimate, because they had six months of payments, correct? Six bills is what's, we have, what we have here that we paid.
Yes.
So they're showing a $10,341 monthly overage. Based on their expectation of 320 cubic yards, they said they picked up 3,073 cubic yards, which is 512 average per month, and only 190 more than what they anticipated, which those numbers, you know, can do general math and figure that out pretty quickly. And if you also divide 3,073 by six months, they only picked up 600 cubic yards monthly, roughly.
Okay.
And they could have gotten 18,000 if they were equipped properly. And I don't know how they're measuring the cubic yards, um, because they picked up mostly only limbs.
Yeah, I, I couldn't tell you that.
I think, the general scope, I appreciate your math, I think the general.
Interesting information.
It's outside of the scope of what we originally thought.
Correct. All right, Ms. Vicki?
Okay, Jim Lang?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Melissa Cho?
Yes.
What's the motion?
Uh, uh, do we even need to have one?
To not pay.
Yes, to not.
We do have to have a motion, we can't just not pay it?
No, we need a vote.
We need a vote on it.
Oh, okay, sorry.
No problem.
Sorry.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes, to not paying it.
JP Hodges?
I'm staying.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item is new dumpsters. I have a request for $16,886 to purchase some new dumpsters for sanitation.
Are these to replace some that we currently have, or in addition to?
It's in, in addition to.
Okay.
Which is great.
Yes.
It's a good problem to have.
It is.
So the last ones we did, Scott, replaced?
Yeah, that was mostly replaced around, and I still have to replace. Right now, I'm actually, uh, don't have any small ones, so I've been actually loaning out the big ones, and smaller dumpster rental fees. So basically, all we're picking up on is, you know, if it's a two yard, they want to rent, and all I have is these six yard. I charge them for a two yard rental, and then what they pay for a six yard. But I'm starting to beat up my big dumpsters also, so I don't have a dumpster.
We're either in the private business or we're not, I guess, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Make a motion, we buy the dumpsters, for Scott's quote.
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Ms. Vicki?
Welcome, Andy. Welcome. JP Hodges?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Melissa Cho?
Yes.
Jim Lang?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, I need to remove a 93 Ford from Public Works fixed assets to scrap. VIN number 1FDX8H8LE1PVA22484.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is it just torn up so bad we can't use it?
I'm pretty sure it's beyond, is this the one that's beyond repair?
Yeah, it's growing at the front, it has a trit.
Yeah, yeah, it needs to go.
Is it just going trees? Did it just go to scrap metal, is that what you did?
Well, we're going to strip the cylinders, that's why I'm doing it scrap. We're going to peel off all the cylinders, anything that's usable on it, and then the rest is history. It's expensive, not for me before.
Okay.
It's a long time. Okay, Ms. Vicki?
Jim Lang?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
JP Hodges?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Melissa Cho?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, I need a motion to remove a 2003 Crown Vic. It was the airport fixed asset to scrap, VIN number 2FAFP71W43X178832.
So moved.
Can a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Lots of seconds.
Third, fourth, whatever.
Any discussion? Ms. Vicki?
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Jim Lang?
Yes.
Melissa Cho?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
JP Hodges?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, planning and zoning, we would like to waive the permit fee for the housing authority. They're another government entity that helps out the community, and they are going to build a shop building.
They've built a shop building.
They already built one, or they already built another one?
They've built one there on West Main.
Been built?
That's the one, that's the one, it's my fault, we approved that back in last September, it, my fault I didn't get it before y'all.
Fell through the cracks?
Yeah, hadn't stood through the cracks.
We better let that go then.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Too late.
Ms. Vicki?
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Melissa Cho?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
JP Hodges?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Lang?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, I had a quick add-on. Um, the information is, is in your packet for the bid for, um, the second phase of the trails. We just need to award the bid for Phase Two improvements to CK Asphalt in the amount of $637,500. The bid came in higher, but we don't have enough funds allotted for the full amount, so they're going to have to make a change order. So it was suggested to only approve the amount we can afford that is left in the budget.
How, how far?
For the trails.
And this is to not pave some of it?
Correct. They had to take some things out.
Did you see the plans to decide what part of the trail didn't get paved, or are they just making that decision for us?
Um, I believe it was in, is that not in your packet?
I don't think so.
No, we said that, okay.
Says something about core.
No, I'm not sure which portion.
I mean, if we can see the plans, you can have them say so.
Right.
What's getting paved and what's not.
I think, I know that, I'm pretty sure that they said that the, um, the section that goes through the core property will get paved.
Have you seen, have you seen the plans for any of the?
I haven't seen the actual plan.
Okay.
But I feel like there were, there were some notes.
And the rest of their gun?
I thought it was in the bid.
What are they going to do with the rest of it for now?
Just, it'll be, it's like it was before it got paved.
The opinion.
It'll be that chat.
It just has the, doesn't say it, just.
It's like $637,000 in Phase Two.
We probably do need to see what's, uh, cut off.
Yeah, it just says including a negotiated amount of painting the bridge and reduced quantity of asphalt paving.
Yeah, well, probably would be a good idea to see what is redu, what is being reduced.
And I don't know that we have any, you know, I mean, what are you going to, it is what it is.
It's going to happen either way.
Yeah.
When you want to see, like, the plan for the design of it, to see what it's going to look like at the.
Well, I mean, have they, is it even, is any of the stuff done, is it not? This is for Phase Two, right?
Phase Two, yeah, it's already engineered.
Right, so the paving is the very last portion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we can probably determine that when they're ready to pave, right? Or is it, we just, is this a?
No, we can, we can determine that.
Because they haven't done any of the.
They haven't started.
They haven't done nothing, right?
They haven't started yet.
I mean, we can approve the amount, because that's all we have left.
Yeah.
But could it be contingent upon, um, seeing, you know, what that entails? What we're getting out of that 600,000, like, what is not going to get paid?
I would just say pending approval of final paving area or whatever.
Yes.
Right? Or, Eric, can we not do that? Is that weird?
I mean, the funds are supposed to go to the trails, we know that, like.
Right.
And we only have a certain amount left, so what I'm saying is just contingent upon the approval of what is not gonna be paved.
Or just submitting a plan to show what you're doing.
Right, exactly, that's it.
They can do that, but I think this is just gonna be for the funds.
Yeah, I think we just have to do it for the funds.
Yes.
Because, I mean, they've got probably, what, a year of work to do before they get there, six months, at least.
Yeah, probably.
Yeah.
But, I mean, we can only do what we can do. Mostly wanna give more money to the trails. So I'll have to raise those funds somehow, and get it paved in the future. But it'll still be a nice trail, because it'll look just like.
We'll be on top of it between now and then with all the other projects too.
Yeah, it'll be fine. Okay, I still need a motion to award the bid for Phase Two for the six hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars.
I don't, I don't get that, or I can't find it in my emails.
Oh, but it was an add-on.
No, no, I know, but what is the actual amount that they need?
The actual amount that they need is, uh, one million, forty-eight hundred, nine hundred and thirty-seven.
So they're short by.
Four hundred thousand dollars.
Four hundred thousand, they're short by a lot.
Yeah.
Gotta spend it, only spend what we got.
Right.
Make the motion to finish the trail with, best we can, with the money we got left.
Like, all that six hundred, what?
Six hundred thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars.
Is that part of your motion?
Yeah.
She said. Can it have the approval of the plan, though, with it?
Sure.
With the plan with it, like.
Well, pending final approval of.
I mean, we're cutting off four hundred thousand dollars, that's huge, that's almost half. So I'm just saying, can we at least see what we're getting with this?
For that money.
What the sacrifice is.
Yeah, we can email the plans, that's no problem.
Okay.
That's what I was getting at.
Yeah.
Because, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no problem.
Do you have a second?
Because I thought we requested a long time ago.
We did request that a long time ago.
I think it was.
We requested that a long time ago to see, because we knew that there was a deficit, a shortfall.
Right.
So I.
But it was, was it Phase One or Phase Two, I don't remember.
It was, we knew Phase Two was gonna have a shortfall.
Well, they cut a lot of stuff out of Phase One as well.
But that was more like ancillary, like.
We had talked like benches and all the other stuff.
Right, the pavement.
It's the ten-foot wide pavement, right? And, and so he's looking, so I don't know that I understand quite his, his.
I can't find it.
Quantity, but he's got a hundred and twenty-five quantity and a two-hundred quantity.
It's probably like first section. My premier year's gonna cost this much.
What I'm talking about, because he projected it at a hundred and twelve, it ends up at a hundred and twenty-five. And it's the ten-foot wide asphalt, a quantity of one-twenty-five and two-hundred.
Which comes to about sixty thousand dollars.
See all the sub base and everything will get done, right?
Yeah.
But you gotta have the base.
Yeah. And they probably.
I don't, I can't follow this, I can't follow this quantity to match it, was.
Well, they may be doing it like.
But you're saying the asphalt is what's, he's not.
It's my understanding, correct, because it's the most expensive.
Well, is it? I mean, the asphalt portion of, of the Phase Two is only showing forty thousand dollars from CK. Am I reading that wrong?
I can't, I saw the email, but I can't find it in my.
That's where you're pulling this off of, right?
Yeah, at the bottom.
And it, and it states that it's the ten-foot asphalt, right?
I mean, it'll be, the trail will be ten foot wide.
Here's Phase Two, unless I'm reading this wrong.
Deductive alternate number one.
So this is the deduct from it, I mean, you're talking twenty-five, or forty, forty thousand, six hundred something dollars is all that is. But, I mean, unless all this other base and, and everything else has to go with it, here's, so here's, here's ti- ten-foot wide up here as well. I don't understand where, what the quantity amounts are, here's a two-hundred, or a two-sixty, a one-twenty-five, and a two-hundred.
Another contractor.
Two thousand. Two thousand to, two hundred.
Well, who's that deduct alternate number two, and a deduct alternate number three, core section? So I don't, so I don't have this loop section sheet five, I don't have any of that to go off of.
Well, we can always hit the loop and do it next week.
No, it's my Adams are so hard, because we don't have time to get our information.
Do you wanna punt it till next month, that we can just look at it and see what we're actually getting, or with the deductive amount? Looks to me like it's two thousand tons and the deduction is a hundred and twenty-five. Is it down to a hundred and twenty-five?
Well, I think he just needs the, us to approve it so that they can get started on it, and I can email you all the plans, or we can meet again about the plans.
I mean, I, we gotta free up the funds to get it going.
Right.
So the deduction's gonna happen in six months, so. Why don't we, why don't we approve it, and then send us the plans and see what.
Contingent upon approval of the plans.
Yeah. And that way we can see, we all know what we're looking at, what the sacrifice is gonna be, so. I don't think there's anything we can do about it, regardless of.
No.
It'd be nice to know.
Yeah. I'll ask for plans, no problem.
Okay.
Okay, I had a motion and a second already?
Yes.
What's, what's the motion?
Yeah.
To approve the fund.
The funds, contingent.
The funds.
Contingent upon approval of the plans?
Can't really.
I don't know.
Well, if you can't do it, then my vote's no.
You can't.
Just go ahead and tell you.
You can't really do, I mean, you're not, you're not.
We don't have all the information, we were given this like right before we walked in here.
Yeah, I'm just trying to explain the process.
This is six hundred thousand dollars of taxpayer money, and I realize we wanna, I don't wanna slow progress, but we've got, I, I just wanna do it right, that's all I'm saying.
Sure.
We didn't get our information, we don't have a plan, we have all these dollars, we can't figure it out in five minutes up here.
Sure, and I understand, I'm just telling you that if you, you can't really say we approve it contingent on, because then you still have to have another meeting to satisfy your condition. Does that make sense?
Yes, I see what you're saying, so I'm no.
And so you might as well just table it.
Table.
Or table it, yeah.
Yeah, you might as well just table it, if that's the general consensus, just table.
Make a motion, we table it until we get all the information that we need to make the best decision.
Okay.
And then you all can call a special meeting if you want to, if you, if you worried about time.
Next month. We've known about this, we've had time to get all this stuff to us, so.
Okay, open mic.
Would like to tell you why we have to move, uh, municipal league occurred on the third Thursday, you know.
Mm-hmm.
It was, at one point, the reason we had to move all the rest of it was, the treasurer could not get the finances out in two weeks. That put us a month behind as far as proving finances, and so anyway, I suggest to council that we move back to the third Thursday. That way we got our finances, now every now and then treasurer's not able to get it, but ninety-nine percent of the time they are. And so anyway, that's the reason for it, and everybody, after it happened, everybody was happy to get the finances, you know. It's hard, it was doing the best you could do, but you can't send them out if nobody sends them to you.
Which reminds me, are we still gonna have a budget meeting on June first?
So.
So we had set it for the twenty-fifth, but Zeke is unavailable at that time.
Did he get all his financials together that he was working?
Uh, yeah, I mean, we got the financials in our packet.
Okay.
June the, June the first at six o'clock.
Yeah, I think we're checking schedules, because there's some ballgames that I guess that have been running out and that have been rescheduled.
I think everyone's got a term at that week. Um, I think we should do it a different week if we can, because baseball's still a deal.
Okay.
But is there a need to have one?
But, well, the question is, um, it looks in the financials like we're, things are flowing along right through, so the question I have is, we know that there are expenses that people wanna have.
Mm-hmm.
But I think what some of the, what the council would like to see is like, if we're gonna meet, if until we have like our, I know you've been working with Nick on some, like, big, bigger picture items. My question is, what, should we have it after we know where we're gonna, where we wanna be in five years, now we can tune the budget and people's requests to that? Would that be more productive than just having a meeting of, I need this, I need this, I need this, which, we know there are needs, we know that everyone has needs, every department, we're trying to satisfy them.
Right, I was gonna, I was gonna have that plan together by that time.
Okay, that would be wonderful, I think we should have a little bruhaha meeting of that, and then subsequently follow it with a budget meeting so that everyone can tune.
Correct.
Their thing to the right.
That was my plan, yes.
Okay.
So hold off on meeting with our department heads until after?
You guys have the plan, right?
Well, I can.
Master plan.
And I can meet with them and see what their needs are and discuss at that time.
Yeah, and that way you can tune it as the CEO to what, where we want the city to be, and we can approve it, and everyone gets some of what they want.
Okay, so we'll have a workshop. Can we go and pick a date?
No, we'll be in town the first.
When you and.
You want us to get that plan first?
Well, I would like you to, to know, so that, you know, I mean, I, if you don't have it done by then, then we cancel it anyway. I, I don't care, I guess, if, if you're gonna have it done by then, fine, I'll, I'd love to hear it, and love to meet, if you need a little more time, I'm fine with that too.
But baseball is gonna be up in the air.
Yeah, I think baseball.
Without a doubt, yeah, without a doubt.
Okay, I'll get the plan together and then send an email.
That'd be great.
With maybe a couple of dates.
Yeah, that'd be fun.
Okay. Um, announcements, it's police week, so I'd like to thank our Blue family for everything that they do for the city.
Absolutely.
Yeah, uh, Makers Market is this weekend, working on Spring Fest with Young Life. We have extended our swim beach at Sandy Beach, it's pretty awesome.
We drove by, the thing's looking good, the bathrooms.
Got done, the bathrooms, yeah, should be completed in time for the holiday.
So the.
The turf, they should be ready to lay the turf next week, hopefully.
So on the swim?
Mm-hmm.
There's, there's no more.
There's not really.
Sandy area to land a beach, to land a boat.
No.
Let's see how that works.
It's to swim for families.
Perfect.
I hope that that will take care of some of the problems.
Absolutely.
Coral, Coral managed that, correct? Not tied up to the line and.
Uh, game fish.
Game fish.
Will help with that, yes. Okay.
We gotta fingers crossed that works.
Just sink any boat that ties up to it. Easy.
I don't wanna pay that bill. Okay.
Yeah, do that.
That's all I got, guys.
All right, make a motion adjourn.
Second.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Oh, have a good night.